Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for coming. We're a little late getting started, but we will get to it. Just by way of a little bit of a roadmap of what we're going to do this evening, we're going to do lots of office. And then there is a regularly scheduled city council meeting that goes along with what we're doing. So we're going to call the city council to order, have a pledge of allegiance. I'm going to give some brief remarks in lieu of a state-of-the-city address. Won't take up too much of your time. And then we will also have the installation of the vice mayor, the reappointment of our clerk of counsel, several other announcements of appointments, our various directors and so on. And once we have done that and we've completed that, we'll take a short break because the rest of the city council meeting then proceeds. And while you're all welcome to stay for it, I would understand if you would like to take that opportunity to go about your evening. And I don't mean to scare you away, of course. It is a public meeting and we would love to have all of you here, but we completely understand if you don't want to watch readings of legislation and so on, the other things that are on the agenda. So that is basically our plan for the evening and we will get started. Thank you.
Is this other girl going to hear something?
I'm sorry?
Oh, she's got the title.
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Michael Dillon Brennan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
To support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
And the Charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As mayor of the City of University Heights.
As mayor of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Michael, councilman, family and friends, just want to take a few minutes to share with you that this is a great privilege and honor for me to be here today and swearing Michael Dillon Brennan as your mayor of University Heights. It's hard for me to believe that it's been almost 15 years to the day that Michael left his position as my judicial staff attorney and embarked on the journey that ultimately led him to being your mayor. Many of you may not be aware of this, but because of the nature of a judge's duty to impartiality, being a judge can be an extremely isolating position. This is why it is so important for a judge to have someone she likes, trusts and respects by her side as a staff attorney. And it's why I consider myself lucky that I had Michael in that role for the three years he worked for me. Michael was and continues to be a loyal, intelligent, compassionate and pragmatic individual. I am certain that these qualities will aid him greatly and inform his decision-making as he leads University Heights in the future. As I look into the audience today, I see people of all political persuasions and attendants. This is a testament to the campaign that Michael ran, one which highlighted the community's common interests rather than divisions. I could not be more proud of what Michael has and will continue to accomplish as he takes this office. In closing, I want to thank you again, Michael, for asking me to be such a big part of your special day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much for being here. Well, thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
Next, we have the installation of our four city council persons who were re-elected or returned to office. So, thank you.
You're up, Mr. Erdl.
Thank you.
Please repeat after me.
I, Philip P. Erdl.
I, Philip P. Erdl.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilman.
As councilman.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I, Susan D. Pardee.
I, Susan D. Pardee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilperson.
As councilperson.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So, a lesson for Councilwoman Pardee is never to let a former county prosecutor swear you in because she's going to say something. So Martin Luther King Jr. said that life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? And I had the honor and privilege of sitting with Councilwoman Pardee as a former councilwoman in University Heights. And I actually would see Sue Pardee more than my husband David because we would meet, you know, at least two Monday nights during the month. And the kind of service that each and every one of these people on city council and the newly-elected mayor, they're rolling up their sleeves to make this community a better place. Just so you know a little bit about Sue, she has been a resident of University Heights for only 32 years. This is her third term on University Heights Council. She is married to Eric, also a photographer extraordinaire, and the mother of three beautiful women. And I think, and there hasn't been an election on this yet, but I think she's the youngest-looking grandmother in University Heights to Mia Margaret, and I think that's wonderful. She's also a library foundation board member. She works for the Cleveland Heights, University Heights school system, working very tirelessly to obtain federal programs and grants. Her favorite book is Three Levels of Time. I know nothing about it, but I wanted you to know that. Her favorite television show is Sense 8. Is that Netflix or is that real TV or what? I don't know. Netflix. Her favorite movie is Love Actually. She will also, in addition to going to committee meetings and meeting with residents, she's also going to be taking a class with her husband Eric in glassblowing. And she also loves to sing in the shower, not at council meetings. Now, when I asked Sue about her goals, and she's very focused, almost laser-like, and she, I will tell you one of the amazing qualities about Sue when I had the honor of working with her, is she's very level-headed. I mean, I could go from zero to 60 in about two seconds. And she would always reel me in. And she's the voice of reason, at least when I was on city council, and I think she continues to be that role model for others on city council. And her goals in this term will be to make University Heights the wonderful jewel that it really is and that we are all working so hard, as she says, improving communication and enhancing economic development. Muhammad Ali said that service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth. And I think every day that Sue's paying rent every day in University Heights, not only for her own family, but for each and every one of us and all of the families in University Heights. And I am proud to call her my friend and I'm proud that she's my councilwoman in University Heights.
I, John P. Rock.
I, John P. Rock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
The City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilman of the City of University Heights.
As councilman of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So I'm going to quote from Ernest Hemingway. See, I told you, you're like a jury that I haven't spoken to in three years. It's wonderful, captive audience. Ernest Hemingway, an American novelist, short story writer and journalist, said, "When people talk, listen completely. Most people never listen." And John has this innate sense about listening, and I think we lose that quality sometimes. But when you campaign in University Heights, there are 75 streets, because I walked it about six times, John listens. Not only does he listen to our constituents, but he listens to council. And he was appointed to city council and he walks with that sense of humility and runs too. But he really has that sense of humility with regard to service, and I think that's so important. So this is what you want to know about John. He's an architect. He has two master's degrees, not just one, he's got to have two, in architecture and in business administration. He was appointed to a two-year term on city council, and this is his first elected term where he had to wear out some shoe leather. He has a partner, Michael Cato. They have one of the most beautiful homes on Fenwick. It's absolutely gorgeous. And I met Michael when he was on, I think, on Architectural Review Board. And I mean, they're just, I mean, these are two brilliant people that really, you know, they brought their talents to University Heights and we're so lucky to have them in our city. John was previously also on board of zoning. Now, I don't know, I might get into trouble with this, but I think he's one of the youngest-looking members on city council, but I, you know, that's just my personal opinion. Well, you're close, you're close. You're on the podium. John is the past president for the Society for Marketing Professional Services, the Cleveland chapter. His hobbies include running marathons. You know, it's not just like he ran one or two and not like the Cleveland Marathon. He ran 11 marathons in 11 different states. And I think he's training for one now, which is fabulous. Where are you running?
Nashville, Tennessee.
In Nashville. I was just there, it's an amazing city. John enjoys going to the Cleveland Playhouse and spending time on Lake Erie. When I spoke to him about his goals, he is going to be the chairperson of the Safety Committee and will be recreating the Neighborhood Watch Program, CPR Training, the Safety Seat Initiative, and bringing back smoke detectors with the fire department in University Heights homes. His priority is also first-time homeownership for young families. He's going to focus on this, with the city, with working with businesses and trying to create something at University Square. He talks about, quote, "A diverse city in architecture and people and offering something for everyone." John loves this city. I'm going to leave you with this. John F. Kennedy once said, "Leadership and learning are indispensable to each other." And I think John really brings that mixture and that hybrid of leadership and learning from not only his councilmembers, but this city. Each and every one of you have made John better and he will just continue to be stronger and stronger and a real leader for this city, a new generation of leadership. So I want to thank John. Amen.
I, Mark N. Wiseman.
I, Mark N. Wiseman.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the State of Ohio.
Of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances.
And the Charter and ordinances.
Of the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As councilman of the City of University Heights.
As councilman of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I've never had a jury listen this long to me. So I want to start with Mark. And I'm going to quote Tip O'Neill. And Tip O'Neill was the 47th Speaker of the United States House of Representatives from 1977 to 87, representing northern Boston, Massachusetts as a Democrat, from 53 to 1987, the only speaker to serve for five complete consecutive congresses. He is the third-longest-serving speaker in American history. And we all know his famous quote, "That all politics is local." And he's quoted as saying that you can't assume anything in politics. That's why every Saturday I walk around my district, I talk to the longshoremen in Charleston, Charlestown, I'm sorry. I listen to the people in East Boston and their concern on the airport noise. I walk down to the Star Market Square and people tell me about meat prices. And I think that's so important, that residents of a city are really the heartbeat, the pulse, the oxygen. The community gives you life. And I think Mark has a real sense of this community and this pulse. When he walks around our city, our 75 streets, he gets a pulse for our city with regard to safety services and community engagement and garbage pickup and salting and all of the things that make a city vibrant and alive. And he cares deeply and passionately. And, you know, sometimes it's not always great to agree with everything on an agenda all of the time. And Mark, I think, is that voice, that voice that might lead or engage into a debate, and I think that's a good thing. And I think it's a good thing to make councilpeople and a mayor think, and I think it's a good thing for our community to have someone that researches an issue and comes to council meetings prepared and really, really cares. And I think Mark represents our voice on city council amongst all of the other voices. And hopefully it's a symphony in the upcoming term. So Mark has been a University Heights resident for only 30 years. He's married to a beautiful woman, one of the most compassionate people that I know, Serena. Mark has been a councilmember for five years. He's beginning his second term. He is presently an attorney in Cleveland Housing Court. And when I spoke to him about his goals, he talks about longevity in this community and about having families move here to stay here, not just a short-term move, but to really invest in our city and to improve city services. I know firsthand that Mark loves Lyle Lovett because I went with him to Kane Park, great concert, I recommend it highly. And Mark's just passionate about this city and about its families and about its diversity. And I think we are so lucky to have someone that is so engaged in this wonderful fabric of this wonderful, wonderful community. And we're lucky to have him as one of our councilpeople. Thank you.
I'd like to call this meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. The clerk of counsel, call the roll.
Mr. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Wiseman.
Here.
Mr. Erdl.
Here.
Mrs. Pardee.
Here.
Mr. Sims. Mrs. Cameron.
Here.
Mrs. Weiss.
Here.
Is there a motion to excuse Councilman Sims?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk of counsel, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Rock.
Aye.
Mr. Wiseman.
Aye.
Mr. Erdl.
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee.
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron.
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss.
Aye.
If you would join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take a moment to think of Councilman Sims and his wife Andrea. They're in California this evening mourning the loss of Andrea's mother. We wish he were here tonight and our hearts are certainly with them tonight. I'd like to take this opportunity to give thanks. I would like to thank John Carroll University, President Colleran, and our manager of government and community relations, Kate Malone, for allowing us to be here in this room this evening for this meeting. I also want to thank some of the public officials and candidates who stopped out here tonight. I may have missed a few of you. Certainly, you've all seen Judge Kathleen Ann Satula, who did me the honor of swearing me in. Judge KJ Montgomery, who swore in, Councilman Erdl, and Judge Frankie Goldberg, our former vice mayor and domestic relations court judge now, who swore in the other three members of council. Thank you all for being here. Additional public officials, our superintendent of schools, Dr. Talisa Dixon is or was here. Our Cleveland Heights, University Heights School Board members, Jody Serini and Malia Lewis are here. Former school board member, Cal Zucker, I saw was here. Some of our candidates for local office with the judicial and other races coming up, Tom Rain, William Vodrie, Emily Hagan, Kerry Howard and Pablo Castro, all here. Also pleased and honored to have here former common pleas judges, Ann T. Mannan and Michael Astrom, all here. And if you're also a public official and I missed you, sorry I missed you. But thank you for being here. And also, I want to specifically recognize Deanna Bremer Fisher, who is the executive director of Future Heights, a board that I recently exited because, as mayor, I couldn't serve on the board any longer. But it was an honor to work with her these last two years to improve University Heights and Cleveland Heights and make our cities a place to live, work and play. So thank you for being here. I would also like to acknowledge and thank Mayor Susan Infeld for her 20-plus years of service to our community. I'd like to thank my family. My dad is here, my mom is here, my stepmom and dad's wife is here, my sister and my nephew are here, my cousin Pat is here. And most of all, of course, my wife Gina Ventry is here. Thank you. And I have to thank all of them, all of you, for your support and encouragement. I also want to thank the members of city council for their support and encouragement up through this day and the support and encouragement of all seven members of council since the election, because we all want to work together to make this a better city. So, thank you. But most of all, I want to thank all of you, the citizens of University Heights. You have humbled me with the opportunity you've given me here to serve you and to serve our community as mayor of our city. Thank you. The elected officials before you have a vision, and it's a vision to make our city the city it ought to be for the 21st century and decades to come. We will do this through investment in our city and in our community, from commercial redevelopment and reinvestment to improved safety services, to making our streets more bicycle and pedestrian friendly, to providing tax relief, to renewing our commitment to improving our public schools, to improving the culture in city hall and making it more friendly, accessible, efficient and responsive. We have a vision for University Square, for Cedar Taylor and for all points in between, extending to Cedar Green. We will update our zoning code. We will update our ordinances to prohibit discrimination. We will make our city more sustainable and we will recreate and bring back and establish a new many of the citizen committees that we once had in our city and make them anew and bring them back so that we have more civic engagement, more citizen involvement, because the job of making the city the city we want it to be is all of ours, not just those of us down here. We need to plan to work together, to listen to each other, to be more transparent and to be respectful even when we disagree, and especially when we disagree, and to collaborate to make our great city. and especially when we disagree, and to collaborate to make our great city even better. In the weeks since the election, I've met with many of the dedicated, hard-working men and women who work for our city. Many of them will be continuing their service. And in review of our administration, I believe this city has been underserved. And it's not because of any failing on their part, but because I believe our city could stand to make some strategic hires and additions to improve our service to you. And among them, I intend to create and fill with the assistance of our council positions for an economic development director and for community engagement. And these new positions will promote investment and improve service and communications throughout our community. Many of the changes won't be made overnight, and I'll be the first to admit my own impatience. But our work is underway, and I've been anxious to get started officially, and the time is now upon To that end, some of the legislation we will consider tonight is a product of the change of direction in our city. There is much to do, and without further ado, we begin. Go team. Together, we will reach new heights. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here, and thank you for helping make University Heights the great city that it is. Okay. We do have a few more appointments that we want to do before we get to the main work of the meeting. We do have several directors that are being reappointed or appointed, so if those directors could please come down front. Oh, you're right. You're right. No, we moved that down. And I'm sorry. Before the directors come down, I did skip something. So if the directors would please sit tight. The next item on the agenda is the election of our vice mayor and the administration of the oath of office to the vice mayor. So...
Yes, I'd like to nominate that we continue with Sue Pardee as the vice mayor.
Second.
Okay. Is there... We have a motion to continue Sue Pardee as the vice mayor, and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the vote.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Congratulations.
I, Susan D. Pardee.
I, Susan D. Pardee.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability as vice mayor.
To the best of my ability as vice mayor.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
Before we resume the agenda, there is one more elected official I noticed is here, and I want to make sure I specifically recognize Mayor Georgine Wheelo, mayor of South Euclid. Thank you very much for being here, Georgine, mayor. Just, if you'll indulge me, by way of personal background, Mayor Wheelo was kind enough to allow me two hours of her time after the election to sit down and talk about the governance of our cities. And more than that, I'm pleased and thrilled to get this opportunity to, again, work side by side with Georgine Wheelo, as we did 15, 20, however many years ago it was, when Mayor Wheelo was the bailiff for Judge Anne Mannan and I was the staff attorney for Judge Kathleen Ann Satula. And we shared a side at the Justice Center, and we saw each other every day and worked within view of each other for all that time. And here we are again. So, thank you, Mayor Wheelo. And now we'll resume with the agenda. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is the reappointment of our clerk of council. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the reappointment of Kelly M. Thomas as University Heights clerk of coun... Well, you know what, I should have the clerk of council call the roll, shouldn't I? Thank you.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
All right. I just want to say, you know, because sometimes we never, you know, a lot of people don't know who the clerk of council is. And she plays such an important role. And I had also the honor and privilege of working with Kelly when I was on council. And she, you know, not only has to deal with one personality, she has to deal with all of these wonderful personalities that are in front of you. And it's really, it's, the clerk of council sometimes walks a tightrope. And this woman is so capable and so dedicated to this city and to making sure that all of the council members, as well as the mayor and the law director and all of the directors, are informed and apprised of what's going on. And they really have to be meticulous. And she has the knowledge and the know-how and the, and the, and just the love of this city makes her an unbelievable clerk of council. And we are so lucky to have you, Kelly. Really, we're lucky. I, Kelly M. Thomas.
I, Kelly M. Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As clerk of council.
As clerk of council.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now, next, we have our appointments and reappointments of our various directors. So, directors, if you could come down now for reappointment, that would be the time. Thank you. We have Jeff Pecorni, our service director. We have Police Chief Stephen Hammett. We have Patrick Grogan Myers, our community development coordinator. We have James McReynolds, our building commissioner. And... And we'll... Yes, yes. We have Bill Sheehan, our finance director. Okay. And we'll address the fire chief separately. So, okay.
And just so you know, when we say "I state your name," you can all state your names also. So, no fair switching positions. If you'll please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America.
And the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances.
The charter and ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As, and please state your positions.
As, as the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
And then, next, we have, we're naming an interim fire chief. Robert Perko III is here to be sworn in for the first time in that capacity.
May I just please raise your right hand? I, Robert D. Perko III.
I, Robert D. Perko III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As interim fire chief.
As interim fire chief.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
So help me God.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. And a special thank you and congratulations to Mayor Brennan, vice mayor, and all of council. This is an exciting time in University Heights, and it should be, because it feels like a lot of positive energy is sitting up here. Coincidentally, this new year brings many new forms of leadership in the great city. Throughout his campaign, the mayor stated that together we will reach new heights. I am honored and humbled to be part of the leadership team that will achieve this, because I know we will. Mayor, members of council, thank you for your confidence you place in me and the courage to make this appointment. I accept this position, fully comprehending the responsibility that goes along with it. With the direction of the mayor, safety director, council, firefighters, and fire officers I serve with, I vow to provide the most exceptional service delivery with the highest of trained and extraordinary people I have met. Thank you to the residents of the community for trusting in your fire department to be there in your time of need. Without your support, hard-earned tax revenue for the fire department, it could not be what it is today. This is a community you chose to reside in. I hope that is partly because of the safety and services available to you. We have sworn to protect and serve all of you, visitors included. Please share your needs and ideas with us so that we can provide you the greatest service delivery available. Thank you to my family and friends. My mom, dad, uncle, and girlfriend are in the corner there. Thank you for your continued support and patience with my always busy schedule. To my parents, who have been my foundation and have pressed upon me the qualities of a strong worth ethic, integrity, and compassion. To my girlfriend, Jessica, for being my strength who keeps me grounded and tells me not only, tells me not what I want to hear, but sometimes what I need to. We all know that the greatest asset in most any organization, especially public safety, is people. And I could say that I worked with some great people. To the members of the University Heights Fire Department, thank you. Thank you for your hard work and often thankless services you deliver, day in and day out, 24 hours a day. There are some of the highest committed people I have met, often risking mental and physical impact on themselves and their families. Thank you for support throughout my entire career. From the time I started as a probationary firefighter and was shown where the toilet bowl cleaner was, to the support through my different roles and responsibilities throughout the ranks. Like most fire departments, University Heights Fire Department is filled with tradition and years of experience. I am fortunate to have the senior members of this department to lean on for their vast knowledge and many years of experience. The firefighters that I've served with are highly professional, respected, and I have seen them make extraordinary efforts and sacrifices. Most of all, they are courageous. Each and every time the alarm sounds, no matter what the emergency, no matter what the elements, nor the time, they respond. They respond quickly and work together as a team to diligently mitigate any hazard found or attempt to restore human life to any that may be lost. I can't say how proud I am to work with such a special group of dedicated and committed people. Abraham Lincoln once stated, "Commitment is what transforms a promise into reality." As the interim fire chief of University Heights, I am committed to address the needs and challenges of this department with exceptional character and integrity both on and off duty, and to be the leader that builds upon relationships, not only within our own community, but in the surrounding communities as well. I believe that having honest and open communications with open minds, we can take the department forward with new advancements and resources. I am proud to protect and support the members of this department and their mission to this community, and I am honored to be given this great opportunity as the interim fire
Thank you, chief. All right, continuing on the agenda, we need to appoint formally a safety director. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to... I'd like to make the motion to appoint Michael D. Brennan as the safety director.
Is there any discussion?
I think we should add, keeping the lights on to the safety director's responsibility.
Is there any other discussion? Okay. Clerk of council, will you take the vote, please?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
We have the announcement of appointments to council standing committees. That's the next item. I'm sorry. Oh, you're right. I need to be sworn in. Do we have the oath for the safety director?
That one we didn't get to.
Sorry?
I did not get that one printed out.
Oh, okay. We had some computer problems at City Hall over the weekend into today, so we've had an heroic amount of effort to get us to where we are. But we can go ahead
Oh, wait. I need glasses. I state your name.
I, Michael Dylan Brennan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
The United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio. The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of University Heights.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
As safety director.
As safety director.
For the City of University Heights.
Of the City of University Heights.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Good catch. Okay, so now the next item is the announcement of appointments to council standing committees.
Thank you, Mayor. University Heights City Council has seven council committees. Each council member chairs one committee, sits on two committees, and is the alternate for a third. So for the next two years, the building committee will be chaired by Mark Weisman, with members John Rock, Sue Pardee, and alternate Phil Erdel. The civic information committee will be chaired by Pamela Cameron, with members John Rock, Michelle Weiss, and alternate Mark Weisman. The finance committee will be chaired by Sue Pardee, with members Steve Sims, Michelle Weiss, and alternate John Rock. Governmental affairs will be chaired by Michelle Weiss, with members Pamela Cameron, Phil Erdel, and alternate Steve Sims. The recreation committee will be chaired by Phil Erdel, with members Steve Sims, Mark Weisman, and alternate Sue Pardee. The safety committee will be chaired by John Rock, with members Sue Pardee, Mark Weisman, and alternate Pamela Cameron. The service and utilities committee will be chaired by Steve Sims, with members Pam Cameron, Phil Erdel, and alternate Michelle Weiss. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we also have the election of council representatives to boards and commissions. Vice Mayor.
Council's appointment to the planning commission is council member Mark Weisman, alternate Phil Erdel. The BZA representative is Michelle Weiss, the BZA alternate is John Rock. And I would make a motion to appoint these council members to these positions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
We also have announcement of council liaisons to committees and commissions. Mrs. Pardee, if you would.
The planning commission liaison is Councilman Weisman. The board of zoning appeals liaison is Councilwoman Weiss. The city beautiful commission liaison is Councilman Erdel. Financial advisory committee liaison is Councilwoman Vice Mayor Pardee. The parade committee liaison is Councilman Erdel. Recreation advisory committee liaison is Councilman Erdel. And we have a technology advisory commission. The liaison is Councilwoman Cameron. Thank you.
Thank you. These liaisons don't require a motion?
No.
Okay. All right, well, before we proceed, then, this is that portion of the meeting that I promised you in the beginning where I would offer you a jumping off point. So, before we go, or before you go, thank you very much for being here. The rest of the meeting is still, of course, a public meeting. You are still, of course, welcome to stick around for this portion of the meeting, but if you have other things that you want to get to this evening, we'll take a couple-minute break before we proceed with the approval of the minutes and the comments from the audience, and commence with the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you on behalf of everyone here in University Heights City Government for your attendance and then support and enthusiasm. Last regular city council meeting. Do we have, has everybody had an opportunity to review the last minutes?
I just wanted to ask the clerk if she got my corrections this afternoon.
I did get them, I just wasn't able to actually print them out so I could make them into the record.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have, oh, okay.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Rock, on page, I might have to zoom up, page 27. Three or four paragraphs from the bottom where there is the discussion, starts with Mr. Rock added, there aren't many $400,000 homes in the city. The discussion in this paragraph talks about property tax, which was discussed at length, but we also discussed the income tax, and I just want to make sure that makes it to the minutes, because the income tax collection on what could have been a house there was a weighing decision in my vote, so I just want to make sure that gets in the record. And then, on page 3, a few paragraphs down where it says, "Mr. Rock stated Mr. Sims was correct." The word "that" is in there twice, it should say "that would give greater flexibility."
Excuse me.
And I think that was it. That's it.
Okay. Ms. Thomas, did you get all of John's corrections, Mr. Rock's corrections?
Yes, I read them.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Page 6, last paragraph where it says, "Mr. Rock said that although he was excited," I just want to, I think it's a grammatical thing, let me look at this real quick. Where it says, "The code refers to and to have hours beyond midnight," just say, "These items above, beyond midnight." Take out the word "and" to have, because the subject was just being beyond midnight.
Are there any other corrections or additions to the minutes? Do we have a motion to accept the minutes as amended with the corrections submitted by Councilwoman Weiss and Councilman Rock?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none of the clerk of council would call the roll, please.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Pass.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
All right, the next section of our meeting is the comments from the audience. If we have anyone here who wishes to address the council, now would be the time to do it, and if you would come down to the podium, I see Judge Montgomery has asked.
And I will be brief, I promise. So council members, as you know, every year, and for those of you who are new, I always have sort of a come to the court and let's talk about things. And not everyone can make it anytime we have those. But I only wanted to address you to say, please keep our channels open. There are many, many critical changes going on right now in the criminal justice system. We are having a major change in the way that we are addressing crimes and collecting bonds. Monetary bonds have really fallen out of favor based upon the disparate impact they have upon the poor. As a result, we do not have as many bonds to pay off fines when people are convicted. That little pot of money is not there. The Supreme Court has told us in no uncertain terms that court costs, which support the operations of the court, should be treated like a civil debt and sent to a collection agency. Things are very different than they used to be. At 12,000 to 14,000 cases a year, we're being told that a standard speeding fine is not really fair and should be based upon a person's income. Needless to say, at 12,000 to 14,000 cases a year, that gets a little tough. So the whole criminal justice system is undergoing some things. Secondly, crime is very different than it used to be. Our officers, and I'm sure Chief Hammett knows this, I mean, normal, everyday traffic stops are involving weapons in glove boxes, under seats, in the consoles. They are doing these things in broad daylight. They are, we are having, in little intersections, on the way to the Beechwood Place Mall where people are getting rear-ended. There is the opiate crisis driving people to criminal behaviors that would not otherwise be out there, and our jails are the holding cell and the mini hospitals for those individuals awaiting treatment beds, for which there are not enough. Funding, as you guys know, are really, really, they're drying up, and yet for us also, to try to get help for individuals, psychiatric evaluations, things of those things, things like that, we are struggling to find the dollars to address those. With reference to the bright side, for years and years, and Chief Hammett has gotten, and Phil have both grown tired of me saying this, regionalization, centralized booking, it would be a wonderful thing, where when a person is booked in, there is a psychiatrist on board. There is a recovery resources, there are social services in that jail cell, because they are all at one location. I am told, and I sit on that committee as the judge, the local municipal judge, we are moving in that direction, and I hope that I will be able to help you understand in making decisions as to whether you want to support that or not, but hopefully that will help individuals get connected with social services and the help they need as quickly as possible. Lastly, we are seeing a very, very different sort of housing court population than we have ever seen before. Suddenly, we have LLCs. It's no longer the old lady that should have left her home and doesn't want to and is struggling to repave that drive. Rather, it's an LLC that has been bought in bulk by a, and this is your city, that has a owner who lives in Egypt. He's never seen these properties, he bought them in bulk, some in Chicago, some in Cleveland, some in Iowa. And so, people are struggling in order to find out how we can best prosecute those cases, how we best can get compliance with those individuals who are really beyond our grasp. And so we are presented with ever, ever-changing challenges. As you know, Phil works at the court, his docket is burgeoning, he now has well over 300 first offenders a year, because we are trying to give young people an opportunity to see the error of their ways. So criminal justice is a very interesting place to be right now. I want to invite you, please, to always keep that gateway open. If you don't know why I'm doing something, please ask. I always figured the day that I can't explain something, I have an issue. So I hope I can see as many of you as possible in the new year at our next meeting, and if not, you know where to find me. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Mayor Wielo.
Georgine Wielo, 1359 Victory Drive, South Yucca, Ohio. I just wanted to wish you all well. Congratulations, 2018 and the energy that's here in the room. And some of you I know, some I do not, and your mayor was very, he was a kid when I met him. But what I wanted to talk about was is how wonderful it's been to partner with University Heights throughout the years. I've had the opportunity to serve with Burl Rothschild, and then Susan Enfeld, and now be serving with Michael. Your directors are incredible. We've worked together on many issues, such as safety issues, but recreation, too. I don't know if you know, but, you know, anyone from University Heights is permitted to rent out the South Yucca Community Center, and our kids play ball together, and our kids play soccer together. And I think it's a great way for us to start talking about collaborations, and the judge is right, things are changing, and all of these young people, they're going to make the change. And so, congratulations, Michael, to you, Mayor, and to City Council. And Mark, we miss you, we loved working with you for so many years. And when you talk about housing, Mark, you were definitely a pioneer. So thank you and congratulations to all of you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Collier.
I'm a 32-year resident of University Heights, and one thing that...
Ron, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Sorry. My name is Ronald Collier, 4446 Sillsby, 32 years. I love this city, but there's one thing that's really been irking me the last couple months, is, it was on Channel 5, unfortunately, the crime issue. I live right near the Cedar Green area where a lot of car thefts and robberies taking place, and I'm very nervous, and not to mention just seeing how people are even getting followed home from stores, it's like, or wherever, and getting robbed, accosted in their driveways. I just want to know, what can we do to solve the problem? Because I'm very nervous, and I've never been nervous through all 32 years I've lived in this town, of going outside of my house, worried that somebody's going to rob me or assault me, or my mother or my father.
Yes. Chief Hammett, would you care to comment on Mr. Collier's concerns?
Actually, Ronald makes me feel really old, because he grew up with my son. I'm 33 years old, and kind of threw me off.
These types of crimes have always occurred, but they're in the upsurge, and they're not just here. We're part of a task force, we're part of a group that are investigating them, and they've spanned from Lorain County to Lake County. And there have been some arrests made. There needs to be more arrests made. I don't want to say too much, because this is an active investigation, but what you can do to protect yourself, number one, all those cars you heard of being stolen from Speedway, they were all left running with the keys in them. The cars that have been taken out of the driveways, all but one had the keys in them. The robberies, where force was used to take the cars, there were two of them in our city. What you can do to protect yourself is be aware of your surroundings. If you think someone's following you when you pull in your driveway, don't pull to the back of your driveway, stay right by the curb. Typically, they're waiting for you to go to the back of your driveway where it's dark or more secluded, where they can rob you, or whatever they want to do. But be mindful of your surroundings, don't be tentative about going to a lighted place, driving to the police station, we're 1.82 square miles, drive to the police station. Everybody's got a cell phone, call the police, tell them you think you've been followed. In the vast majority of these instances, people thought that they were being followed, but they didn't do anything. They just thought it may have been their imagination. But if something doesn't look right to you or feel right to you, it probably isn't right. So be mindful, be vigilant, be careful, be aware of your surroundings, and don't leave your vehicle unlocked, and don't leave the keys in the car, as far as the f- goes. And anything, any other questions you have, you've nowhere to find me. 30.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, we still have the floor for public speakers?
James Pash, 2152 Campus Road, Beechwood, and Beechwood City Councilmember.
Right, before you proceed, this, another public official I managed to leave out, so... Councilman Pash, thank you very much for being here.
Don't worry, the slight was noticed, Mayor. No, I'm kidding. You know, I just, I wanted to come here today first to congratulate all of you, also because we had the rare Monday off, I figured it just felt weird to not be at a council meeting. And, you know, I want to talk to you a little bit about the Swensons that has just opened up, although, you know, they say January 8th, it's essentially been open every day for about a week or week-plus now. So the residents on Fenway and on campus and on Cedar, they tend to call me not only because I'm a council member, but I'm also a council member that lives where they live, on campus. And the part about this process that really bothers me, both as a fellow council member and as a planning and zoning member for our city, is that the business doesn't border any of your residents, it borders all of our residents. And there was never an inclusive process when they were brought into the process. You know, if we're going to build something that borders our residents, we have a town meeting, they come to planning and zoning, we talk it out, and we try to build something that both accommodates the future business needs of our community, but also tries to limit the impact on the daily lives that they're leading. Currently, if you live on the corner of Cedar and Fenway, or down Fenway, there's just a straight shot that you could see through, like the miniscule plants that were planted and the landscaping. I hope that just because it's the dead of winter, but it's not going to be spring for a while, and, you know, Swensons is open now. The other, I think, huge negative is that, you know, currently, as everyone up here knows, you guys have an ordinance that says that restaurants shouldn't be open, that are... are serving outside of their restaurant doors past the midnight hour. Swensons on Friday and Saturday nights is open till 1:30 in the morning, for, besides the fact that nobody eats a burger and shake after midnight. There's also a, the reality of, it's just, you're, you're bordering a residential neighborhood, it's not necessary to, for any restaurant to be open after midnight, that borders exactly where people are living. If, I implore all of you, if you get a chance, to just drive down Fenway in the evening now, because you also can't find a parking spot on Fenway, because Swensons has their employees park the whole way down Fenway on Beechwood property till you get to Campus Road. That, we'll put an end to in our city, right, with new, new, new parking regulations. But all I'm asking is that Swensons is open, I get it, it's here. What we need to do is figure out how to work together to try to make it so our residents have their daily lives impacted a little bit less, you're able to operate your restaurant at full speed. And so, one of the things I would say is, before you go changing that ordinance, if we could just have a combined meeting, if a couple of members from our council and your council could get together, our newly-elected mayors, who are just both sworn in within the last couple of days, could that, get together and figure out how, how we could structure something that minimizes the impact on the daily lives of people. When these people bought their homes, you have to remember, that was a row of single-family homes that was zoned for residential purposes, knocked down, rezoned for commercial purposes, and then a restaurant was built that was then open till 1:30 in the morning. I mean, talk about changing the impact on someone's lives and their property values overnight. All we're asking for is a little bit of partnership. I've reached out to a couple of you, it's been well-received. I wanted to come here tonight to reach out to all of you at one time, and to let you know, my, my door is open, my cellphone number is 216-630-9671. I want to hear from you, I want to solve this issue together. Thank you for your time. And congratulations.
Thank you, Councilman. And if I may comment briefly in response. I, I do intend to meet with you and with concerned residents about the issues regarding Swensons, and I look forward to scheduling that meeting with you at our next mutual availability. And, and whether or not the council passes the, the ordinance, the change of the ordinance that's before us this evening, either way, I would intend to meet with you to, about those issues. So, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Moore?
My name is Yo-Yo Moore, my legal name is Asomore, 2392 Bromley Road, University Heights. I wanted to first, congratulations, I spoke to the mayor-elect before his officially becoming mayor, and congratulations to all of you. And I'm proud to be a part of your city for just a little bit over two years now, and I find it to be a wonderful place to live, and for the most part, a great place to raise a family, and I'm proud to be a part of the community. I don't know if you can see me there, sorry about that. Three or four quick things, I don't want to take up a lot of time. Parking commercial vehicles, I know I've spoken to the mayor about it prior to the election, I've spoken to Chief Hammond and Lieutenant Orientz as well. Parking commercial vehicles in personal driveways, I understand that it could be a problem for the zoning, or for people just parking random vehicles in driveways, that the ordinance was put into effect, I believe, back in 1940, or somewhere in that area, but this is 2018. But I would like to request that it be taken a look at to change certain rules of parking commercial vehicles, especially for those like myself who has no other regular vehicle to get to and from that commercial vehicle, especially in this kind of weather which we're dealing with out, outside now. Next thing I wanted to talk about was the, I live right next to the Garrity School, so I'm the last house prior to the school parking lot. We have a lot of issues in the past with people coming, parents coming to pick up their children, running the stop signs, driving really fast out Bromley and University Parkway to and from the school. There are children outside playing. There has been some steps taken to start working on that, making the parents go into the parking lot to pick up, which is fantastic, but I think we need to go a little bit further, because there's still a lot of stop sign running, number one, is illegal, it's, two, it's dangerous, and you have children, including my own, that cross that street to get to the buses to, to go to their friends. God forbid, it only takes one incident to ruin many lives, and I think it should be looked into. The, and the last thing, maybe not least, is there is certain individuals, which I have spoken to the mayor and a few, several other individuals, that live in our community in one particular location in the Bromley University area, that has been known for some really shady dealings, especially in the middle of the night, and these people are approaching cars in the Garrity parking lot in the middle of the night, 1, 2, 3 in the morning, blasting loud music, packet, passing packages to and from windows. This happens on a regular basis. I have called in to University Heights PD on several occasions, but I would like it to be addressed and possibly look into, like, stopping this. And also, I'm aware that there are certain minors in the community that spend way too much time at this particular home, and I'm not sure they're up to any good. And I wanted to make that, you know, make sure everybody's aware of that, and if you could, you know, as the new council and the mayor, to address these things, and I'm always open to coming down and meeting with one or all of you on any subject. And once again, congratulations, and let's make 2018 amazing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. And, and yes, I would be willing to speak with you further about the, the issues you've raised later. And, I don't know, Chief Hammond, is there anything you would care to address now from things that he brought up regarding the stop signs, or-
The traffic problem will address to me. That other issue I wasn't aware of, and if you can talk about that also. It's not a very-
Pleasure, thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you. Okay, are there any further public comments? If there are no further public comments, we will then go on to the regular agenda items. First item, A, the appeal of Tim Pfeffer and Soul Houses LLC, 4365 Groveland, regarding the Board of Zoning ruling dated December 13, 2017, where the Board denied Mr. Pfeffer's application for a special permit to allow four unrelated occupants in a dwelling unit. Is Mr. Pfeffer, or is representative, there he is, thank you. Yes, if you'd come down, please.
Congratulations, mayor.
Thank you.
And thank you, Vice Mayor and council for your time, I appreciate it. Yes, our appeal was denied on December 13th. We had made a request to the Board of Zoning Appeals to allow the four John Carroll students that we have leased our property to, to stay through their current lease, which is May 31st of 2018. We based our request in, in this appeal that I'm appealing tonight, firstly, we didn't know about the ordinance, and, and we apologize that we violated it. It was not listed on the application for the occupancy permit. Had we been aware, we would have followed it. Also, the enforcement of the ordinance will create a hardship for the students that are leasing the property for us right now, they're focused on their studies, and, you know, one of them being forced to move out, or all of them, you know, because they're, they're friends, might, you know, that would create a hardship for them to find a place, you know, near, near the school. It would also create a hardship on our company, you know, for an unplanned vacancy and loss of revenue during the slowest time of the year to find new tenants. We also do have support of one of our neighbors, which lives at 4361 Groveland. It was the Rothman family, and I have this, I can give this to Ms. Thomas, and I'll read it for you. I would support the appeal as long as, A, no new tenants between now and the lease ends, which we would not, you know, we're, we're, we, we work hard to be in compliance, and so we would not add anybody. That was her concern, and also that the tenants are making a conscious effort to be quiet. So, I will go and pass this. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Weis.
Mr. Moore, thank you. Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm, looks like I'm feeding back here.
So, I'll try to lock the microphone. Does anybody hear me? So, how many bedrooms in the house?
It is a three-bedroom, permitted as a three-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath house, and there is a finished attic as well. And how many years have you owned the house? So, I have, obviously, I'm property manager, the company has owned the house for a few years, it was formerly under Crossroads Group, and they consolidated their LLC, LLCs at the beginning of January. So, it would show Soul Houses as the owner for a year, but they've owned it for a few years, so. Could you estimate how many years they've owned the house? At least that I know of, four, I've been here for. I've been with the company for four years. And how many years has the house had four people in it, as opposed to three people in it? So, less than a year. We entered into a lease June of 2017 with the four ladies that are John Carroll students. Prior to that, we had a family, so they were all related, and they ended up purchasing a home in Pepper Pike. So, this is the first time you've rented to students? Correct, first, first time we've rented, rented to students. Okay, all right. Thank you, nothing further, thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question. Do you, does your, does your group own any other homes in University Heights?
Oh, there's one other home on Raymont.
And I'm assuming there's less than four people in that one?
Correct, we've, we had family in that house.
Okay, all right.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Pfeffer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes, Councilwoman Cameron, please.
Yes, sir, when you made a decision to rent to students, John Carroll students, did you not consider that there might be some differences in the laws as relates to young people?
We own other properties in other cities, and not had an issue there. Like, again, I apologize, we, we had no, no idea, so, no, I did not, and our company did not take it in consideration that there was an ordinance, not allowing it, I apologize.
Okay. Are, all of the four, are they, all four are totally unrelated? There's no sibling group, or?
No, none of them are cousins, brothers, sisters, because they're all unrelated, there's four.
Yes, Councilwoman Weiss.
Thank you. So, Mr. Pfeffer, first of all, I want to apologize that you, your company did not receive adequate notice on the unrelated parties, you know, in rental homes. I think that the administration is going to be looking at all of these efficiencies to make sure that this no longer happens to anybody else. I'm just very hesitant to, to overturn the BZA ruling, because we have had many issues in the past with many unrelated student housing before. And that's just, that's the one thing that makes me nervous, no fault of your own, unfortunately.
Understand.
You know, to overturn that BZA ruling.
Were you finished?
Yeah.
Thank you. Council, Councilman Rock?
Yes, thank you, mayor. So, we discussed through this campaign season, and as you know, we went door-to-door, and one thing I heard tremendously was the amount of rental units throughout the city, and sort of a plea for help from residents. A lot of people have said that there's more than four residents in this house, and five in this one, and this one's got their boyfriend, and this girlfriend, and this one's staying here, and, you know, and we wrote down the addresses, but it was an overwhelming plea from the community that this was happening in our city. Now, this is your business, this is what you do. Now, I looked at the county website, you own about 60 homes throughout Cuyahoga County, so this is, this is your job, this is, you're no stranger to this.
Do you?
To rental properties, but, and they're throughout Cuyahoga County, so I'm seeing Cleveland, Maple Heights, Cleveland Heights, there's Orangeville Heights, a variety of cities, they all have very different codes. But for the most part, a lot of the codes are very similar when it comes to housing in terms of number of unrelated people in, in the household, at least in some of the codes that I've seen in the past, I didn't look at Maple Heights specifically, but I suspect there's a lot of similarities between our code and our code when it comes to that, because they were all written around the same time. So, since this is your, this, you've built a career on this, and you have quite a portfolio of houses, I would hope you would work with the building commissioner to understand all the varying rules when you go into a new city, and this, this is one of them, that this needs to be crossed off. So, I, I'm very hesitant as well, just because the overwhelming plea for help in terms of, you know, number of people in one household, and the parking that it takes, and the impact that it has on the street, and the impact that it has, you know, on the neighbors. So, I'm a little hesitant on this one, and just because this, this, you're not new to this, I mean, there's almost 60 houses in Cuyahoga County alone, so.
Councilwoman Cameron, did you have further comment?
I just would like to say that I'm, I'm not in favor of approving, or making a change to the ordinance via this motion, but I would be in favor of allowing a temporary or variance to the ruling, to permit the students to remain there at least until the end of the term.
Okay.
I, I don't know how legally we would do that, but-
Well, maybe Mr. Cicero could fill us in on that. I don't think it would be a temporary variance, it would probably be a, a license of some sort, or?
The BZA has issued its ruling, this is an appeal under the city code, and as such, this council can only affirm or deny, or overturn that ruling by the BZA. There's really no variant from that at this point in time.
All right.
There would be a potential further appeal from this council's decision to a court of common pleas, but that might not satisfy the-
And Mr. Cicero, this is a special permit, so this is not a variance, so special permits do come with a temporary window. Do you, do you know how long that window was requested?
On the special permit?
Mm-hmm.
I have not been provided, and I've been provided a copy of the BZA minutes, along with, God, I don't know, 11:00. And I believe when one does seek the permit, the permit is good, it's a rental permit for one year.
For one year, so if, let's just say hypothetically, if this were to overturn the BZA's decision, essentially, there could be four or more unrelated individuals in the household up until January of 2019, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but would it be January of 2019, or would it be from the original permit?
It'd be one year from the date of issuance.
Okay.
And I don't have before me when the date of issuance- issuance.
But what I'm saying is, a special permit would be accepted or denied on this very day, and that would live for one year.
The perm, the application date was 11/21/17, as far as the Board of Zoning Appeals. Just let me, I'll give you a second to see when the actual permit itself, as actually the denial of the permit. So if you issued, if you overturned the BZA's decision, it would be from one year from today.
I understand. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Cameron?
Yes, Mr. Pepper. Is there any provision within the company to accommodate these students? Or any, any group of these, dividing these people up in any way? Is there any provision? Do you have a property similar or close by, or?
There's, there's not a provision in the least for that. We, our owner also owns apartments on Shaker Square, and yes, we do have single-family houses in the county, but it would depend on the students. Obviously, if you make that decision, we'll see what works for the students, but I know that, that this home's close to John Carroll, and that is the reason why they leased it. So, you know, they didn't know, and, and we didn't know. I mean, we know now, but...
Right. I'm, I'm just trying to, trying to accommodate the worst-case scenario. What would you all do if, if the house were to burn, burn up?
Sure.
What would you all do as owners of the property? Would you try to relocate those people?
We would offer it to them.
Yeah.
In, in any scenario, you know, it would be up to them.
Of course.
You know, whether the house burned, or you made this decision, it would be, you know, okay, your lease is, you know...
Is terminated.
You gotta move, and so here it is, and, you know, they would maybe, you know, they'll make their decision, yeah.
All right. I just wanted to know if there was any provision, if you all had anticipated what an outcome could be. So, I hear you.
If I may, hitchhiking off of Councilwoman Cameron's question, do you presently have vacancies at the Shaker Square Apartments that the management company also manages?
We do have vacancies. We have a few totally different apartment versus a single-family home, and different pricing.
And again, at Shaker Square, not by John Carroll?
Yeah.
Is there anything further, any further discussion? Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will note that on the front page of the application, it, I'll try and sit far enough away from the microphone, says names of all occupants at the bottom of the first page, and it only lists three people. Katie Pollak, and Mina maybe something, and Emily Ellis, so just interesting to note that. So primary contact tenant, is that another tenant, then?
Yes. We had listed four tenants on the application.
So it's, it's not exactly clear, because it says names of all occupants under that, even though it's listed for primary contact. For the tenants, it doesn't say, it doesn't have all the occupants there. I wonder how many violations notices the city has out at this time for this type of situation where we have more than three tenants and a residence. Mr. Commissioner, would you have any idea of that information as we sit here? I know I'm ambushing you in certain respects, so...
Since I believe we started this complaint against six different properties, and on the way out, I got responses from three that completely complied, three that looked into the appeals process, and then one that lived the appeals process. This was the only home representative of the organization that actually went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Everybody else out of the six had complied.
Okay. Complied, meaning removed a resident from the home...
Yes.
...to only have three people. Okay.
Yes. I suggested that we do that over the break, it would be less of a bad experience for the tenant. These notices to remove the tenants went out within our...
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further from any members of council? Do we have a motion?
Luke often lets us to vote on these, even if we're voting against it. Do you feel strongly, or should we just not make a motion and let it die?
Yeah.
No, I would affirm, but only if somebody made a motion.
Okay.
Either approve, affirm, or revoke, or overturn the decision. I have problems with that. I have to remember, if somebody makes a motion to overturn this BZA decision. Okay. All right. Thank you. I will make the motion to affirm the BZA's decision and deny the appeal from Soul Houses LLC.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this motion?
I just want to say I'm very sensitive to the situation, and I'm sorry that this will dislocate the students. It sounds like you've done a good job in our city. You're renting to families, not strictly students, but as you've heard, this is a significant problem in our city, and this is not the time to set a precedent in any way. So I'm sorry that it's happened.
Is there any further discussion? Will the clerk of council call the roll? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Point of clarification.
Sure.
We're, we're voting to let stand the, an "I" vote, let stands the BCA ruling that denies his application.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Yes, to be clear, an "I" vote affirms or sustains the decision of the BZA, and a "no" vote would be to overturn the decision of the BZA. Do we, yes, the clerk would call the roll on the question.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdol?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pepper.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Letter B, Ordinance 2017-49, Enacting Codified Ordinance Chapter 874, Entitled Medical Marijuana Operations, Enacting Codified Ordinance Chapter 1284, Entitled Medical Marijuana Dispensaries, Amending Codified Ordinance Section 1266.02, Entitled Use Regulations, and the Schedule thereto, to Regulate Medical Marijuana Cultivators, Processors, Dispensaries, and Testing Laboratories on Second Reading. Yes, Councilwoman Weiss?
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the benefit of the audience, since this is on second reading, the Government Affairs Committee discussed allowing having medical marijuana dispensaries in the city. Currently, there is only one site in the entire city where a dispensary would be eligible based on location of schools, places of worship, libraries, et cetera. And if there is an opportunity for petitions in the future, we just want to have University Heights be able to have this economic development opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Weiss. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cameron?
Councilwoman Weiss, could you identify the location where such a place would be permitted under the vagaries of the law?
There is one area, which is by University Square on the corner of Cedar and Warrensville.
Okay, thank you. Business area.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Weiss, and a second by Mrs. Pardee, the Vice Mayor. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Seeing none, if the clerk of council would call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdol?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Agenda Item C, the Ordinance 2017-50, Adopting a Moratorium on Applications for and the Granting of Building Permits, Zoning Approvals, Certificates of Occupancy that Would Enable the Creation or Existence of Medical Marijuana Testing Laboratories or Testing Facilities for a Period Not to Exceed Six Months to Allow the City to Review Applicable State and Local Laws to Plan for Regulations relating to Such Use on Second Reading. Also sponsored by Councilwoman Weiss. Councilwoman Weiss, would you care to speak on this issue?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is on second reading. There is one piece of the previous ordinance that was just passed with testing laboratories, and our law director and the Government Affairs Committee just wants to look into this a little further, because the testing may actually have more opportunities for the city than the actual dispensaries, and we will be having a meeting in the next few weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Weiss. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? Proposed ordinance, excuse me. Councilwoman Pardee, Vice Mayor Pardee?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I'm very interested in learning more about this. I think there may be potential for testing laboratories right here at John Carroll, potentially, or in some of our commercial locations, so I'm very excited to learn more and pursue this in Governmental Affairs. And thank you to Councilwoman Weiss for the work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman Weiss, second by Vice Mayor Pardee. Is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, if the clerk of council would call the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdol?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you to Councilwoman Weiss for taking the initiative on these two ordinances.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Item D, Ordinance 2017-51, Amending Codified Ordinance Sections 1242.14, Entitled Demolition Permit Required Issuance, and 1244.04, Entitled Applications and Appeals, to Require That Any Application for a Demolition Permit for Demolition of a Residential Structure Be Considered Exclusively by City Council, and this is on second reading. The sponsor of this is, I don't have it in front of me, was that?
Mr. Sims.
It was Mr. Sims. Is there anybody who's prepared to speak on Councilman Sims' behalf as to the purpose of this ordinance? Or would someone care to do that?
I don't remember.
And I believe I could.
Mayor, I believe this came out of a request by a resident to demolish a home, and there was some uncertainty about what the steps were, and what body of the city to go to to make that request, and this is an attempt to clarify and straighten up some uncertainty.
I believe that is the case, too. As I understood, the, there was a clarification that was required. We had a resident who was interested in seeking a permit for demolition, and it was unclear whether he should go to the BZA, or to the Planning Commission, or directly to council, or in what order, and this proposed ordinance would help clarify what that process would be.
Okay, I remember that. Good.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this ordinance? If there's no further discussion, is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2017-51?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Vice Mayor Pardee, second by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, if the clerk of council would take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdol?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Agenda Item E, Ordinance 2017-52, Amending Codified Ordinance Sections 1244.01, Entitled Establishment of Board of Zoning Appeals, and 1244.08, Entitled Appeal to Council Fee, which shall hereafter be entitled, quote, "Alter the Composition of the Board of Zoning Appeals, and to Remove the Right of Appeal to Council of Board of Zoning Appeals' Decisions." This is on second reading. Councilwoman Weiss, you're the sponsor of this ordinance?
Yes, thank you.
Proposed ordinance? If you would proceed, please.
This also came from the Government Affairs Committee. After much research with other cities, I found that University Heights is almost unique in, in the BZA structure, where the mayor has a vote. There are a lot of reasons, there are many reasons that other cities do not allow a mayor to have a vote. One of, one of the main reasons is sometimes the process can get politicized, which we do not want to happen. We want a fair hearing for anyone coming to the BZA, and this ordinance will now have a structure where there will be no mayor vote, there will be another BZA...
Member.
Member, thank you, Councilwoman Cameron. And there will be no appeal process to council, it will go right to the courts.
Yes, and if I may, I would also add that the, that the, the BZA appointments, while presently are made by the mayor, while the appeal to council would be removed, council would still have a voice within this process, because the, it would now be, appointments to the BZA would now be subject to council approval. So the, the effort to remove the possibility of politicization, public, excuse me, politicization of our BZA is something I happen to welcome, and certainly, I would thank the Councilwoman Weiss and the Governmental Affairs Committee for crafting this proposal. Is there any discussion? Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adopt Ordinance 2017-52, motioned by Councilwoman Weiss, seconded by Councilwoman Cameron. Is there any discussion of this motion? Seeing none, if the clerk of council would take the vote.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdol?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item F, Ordinance 2017-53, Repealing and Replacing Codified Ordinance Chapter 1475, which shall hereafter be entitled, Registration of Vacant Buildings and Certificates of Compliance for Vacant Buildings. This is on second reading. This comes from our building committee. Councilman Weisman, if you would please speak as to this proposal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a, actually, a proposal that has been... Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a, actually a proposal that has been years in the making. By way of background, in a perfect world, when a bank or servicer forecloses on a house, they're merely waiting for someone to be there on the back end to buy the house because it's in such a good shape, and it's, if they've done their homework right, the money left on the house is usually less than what it's worth, so someone wants to buy the house and either fix it up or actually move in. Unfortunately, the foreclosure crisis has taught us that the opposite has been coming true, and for a long time, ten years perhaps, banks and servicers have been purchasing, having houses in foreclosure and then letting them go vacant and rot, and it creates all kind of havoc in the neighborhood. University Heights, until this point, has had a vacant property registration ordinance which requires a, the plaintiff in a foreclosure case, once they realize that a house is vacant, they have to let us know about it, pay a $200-ish fee, and let us know that it's vacant so that the city can watch over the house. Unfortunately, that doesn't do what we needed to do. We've seen many houses, this council, in the last couple of years that have been in such disrepair. They've either caused problems in the neighborhoods, they've invited crime, they've housed animals and other things. We had to knock down a house. We're all familiar with the house on Tullamore Road that took us a couple of years to get in front of and actually knock down. No one wants to knock down a house, but once it's vacant for so long, sometimes it's the only thing you can do. Curious that Mayor Wheelo is here from South Euclid because this ordinance is a mirror of the ordinance that South Euclid has in place, and I would commend the mayor, Mayor Wheelo, for having this, and Sally Martin, who is not here, runs the, he's the housing manager, I think, at South Euclid. This is really the gold standard in my mind, and the idea is to force the plaintiff in a foreclosure case, once they know a house is vacant, that they have to actually take steps to fix the house, bring it up to code, so that then they, if they've put money into the house, they want to keep it up and sell it, and then we have a house that the city doesn't have to spend money on for the upkeep as well while it's in foreclosure. I realize I've been in discussions with the Law Department that this ordinance has a couple of areas that we might want to tweak based on some recent developments, but the idea is to get it passed at this point, put it on the books, and then move forward. Thank you to my colleagues on council for being receptive to this idea and working with me to get it done. Thank you especially to the new administration for having an ear for a new idea such as this and the understanding for the problem that we're combating, but this really does a whole lot for the city. We'll spend a lot less money, and hopefully in the future, there won't be houses that have to be torn down, but at the end of a foreclosure, they'll have to be sold and back into the stream of commerce, as it were. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I may, thank you, Councilman Weisman, and I'd also like to note that, yes, this particular issue is one that is near to me, and from the work that I did prior to entering city government, work that we did in Future Heights with respect to advocating to both Cleveland Heights and University Heights, ways to combat some of the problems that come with the, with foreclosures and homes not being taken care of, and ways to remove some of the burden of that upkeep from our cities and to the plaintiffs that bring these suits. I am pleased to see the Building Committee act quickly to enable and bring about an ordinance consistent very much with an issue that I care very deeply about, and also, since you already did, I will again acknowledge Mayor Wheelo, who is present and whose city has been on the forefront and working at this effectively. We've seen it work up there. As a, as an attorney in private practice myself, I have defended, that is, held the hand of a homeowner who was looking to work their way through the process of a foreclosure, indeed even in the city of South Euclid. So I've seen this work up close. I believe it's worked well, and I think it will serve our city well to implement a similar ordinance here. Is there any further discussion? Is there a motion to adopt?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Weisman, a second by Councilman Erdel. Is there any discussion of this motion? Seeing none, if the Clerk of Counsel would take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item G, Ordinance 2017-54, amending codified ordinance section 844.03 entitled "Maintenance of Parking Place and Surroundings." This is on second reading and emergency. Do we, who is the sponsor of this motion?
Vice Mayor.
I am.
Is the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Partey, if you would speak as to this motion.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a little bit more housecleaning. We were notified of this ordinance, or it was identified in an earlier council meeting. It is not part of the zoning code. It is a criminal section, as I understand it, but it addresses some language around serving food in parking lots, I believe, and that was language that is not consistent with activity that's actually already occurring in the city and the most recently opened business Swensons, which went through our entire Planning Commission and zoning process successfully and was approved by council. So we are attempting to clean this up, and with all due respect to the residents, we do hear you. There were residents that attended the meetings when this was first brought up, but we do understand and we're very supportive. We're happy that the mayor is willing to talk, and we will work to smooth these things over. However, that does not change this legislation. I do want to make an amendment to this, so I'm going to make a motion before we discuss to amend, because council actually, and the Planning and Zoning Boards, actually approved this project where hours of operation would be 11:00 a.m. to midnight, Monday through Thursday, and 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. Friday and Saturday nights. So we have amended this to include language where customer parking, customer automobiles within 75 feet of a residential district between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. are hereby declared to be nuisances. I would like to amend that language everywhere it appears to 1:30 a.m. to 6:00 a.m.
Is the amendment noted?
This is also something where we, as a council, have stated repeatedly that we want to address our zoning code. Hours of operation for businesses which have been handled haphazardly in the city will be something that will be addressed in zoning updates, so this is something that we absolutely intend to focus on in the future and be very clear about for any new business that enters into the city.
Okay, very good. I believe we have to have a motion to accept the amendment before we would take up the ordinance itself, take up the question of the ordinance. So is there a motion to amend the proposal to change 1:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m. everywhere it appears in this ordinance?
Like, I will make that motion.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Partey. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Erdel. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councilman Weisman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So we didn't get a redlined copy in our packet. I'm just asking what the ordinance states now in terms of hours of operation?
The hours of operation are in Section C, under Section 1. You'll see them in two places, about the middle of the paragraph. And the parking or storage of customer automobiles within 75 feet of a residential district between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. are hereby declared to be nuisances. Further down, the language is repeated, and I can read the entire sentence. Do you see?
No, I'm actually asking what the current ordinance states, not this one, but our current ordinance states.
Oh, okay, thank you. I think the red line is in the ordinance two weeks ago. If you go back to your...
Not this one. So do we know what it is? Actually, it wasn't at the meeting two weeks ago.
Right, right.
But you have it in your Dropbox. Do you have it in your Dropbox?
That were requiring me to do computer work.
Here. Mr. Weisman?
Midnight, midnight. So it says, the current one is midnight to 6:00 a.m.
And it says, "The preparation or serving for the audience." What we have struck out and discussed at the last meeting was, this is the entire sentence, "The creation of or emission of unnecessary noise, noxious offensive or toxic odors, fumes or smoke, dust, loose rags or papers, and accumulation of debris, or accumulation of debris, rubbish, refuse, garbage, or other waste materials, the preparation or serving of food or drinks upon any parking place outside of any building, structure, or premises in the city, and the parking or storage of automobiles within 75 feet of a residential district between the hours of 12:00 midnight and 6:00 o'clock a.m. are hereby declared to be nuisances." Our law director did some research and found that this extends back to, I'm not sure the date, somewhere in the 50s, I believe, and was mostly from the minutes of that time created because of, do you know what?
From my understanding, it was the noise at Manners.
Okay.
Which my mother got in trouble at, which is now pizzazz and formerly yours truly, and before that it was Manners back in the 50s and 60s.
You mean Bob's Big Boy?
Bob's Big Boy?
Not a whiley and get in trouble over there.
So it was primarily noise and some of the dust and debris. It really wasn't even about parking. It's kind of...
Respectfully, Vice Mayor, most communities have, and this still would permit the offenders to be rebuked or punished as far part of loitering or noise disturbances. This is a rare ordinance that actually puts that kind of activity on the onus of the business owner as well.
Okay.
Which is rare.
Thank you. That's a little more insight. Thank you. This is kind of a catch-all ordinance. There's a lot in it. So again, it's more or less cleanup, and we will be cleaning up our code and working on this going forward. Anyway.
Is there any, is there any further discussion?
We're just discussing the amendment right, not the...
Right, right now we're just discussing the amendment, so if there were, if we were to take a vote, the vote wouldn't be to approve the ordinance at this point. It would be to simply amend the proposed ordinance to 1:30 from 1:00. So if there's no further discussion, the Clerk of Counsel would take the roll on the amendment.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdel?
Aye.
Mrs. Partey?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay, so the proposed ordinance is now amended. We still have a proposed ordinance now amended on the agenda. Is there further discussion on the proposal, or is there a motion?
I will make the motion on emergency.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Sorry about that. Yes, Councilman Weisman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, I, you know, obviously this is a very, a very sensitive issue. A lot of residents have expressed concern. I, after Mr. Pash's request of us, I'm just asking what the practical effects would be of the matter if we tabled this particular ordinance? And then gave us the chance to speak with, the beach with council, the beach with mayor, and some of the interested residents. Not lobbying, I'm just asking what the effect would be.
Effect would be to delay it.
We had an executive session to discuss this.
Yes, we, for the benefit of Mr. Cicero, who's filling in as Law Director for us, we previously went into executive session at the last City Council meeting to discuss some of the implications due to a threat of litigation that had come about in connection with this ordinance. So, and I think in order to address Councilman's, to properly answer Councilman Weisman's question, we might have to move into an executive session in order to... No?
Yeah, I'm not exactly in favor of that. I'm just, I wasn't here at the last meeting.
I understand. I...
I didn't realize.
I do recall that you, yes.
The particulars of the item that was discussed, nor am I interested in inducing any of the discussions that we had with our council during the executive session as part of this debate, so I will...
Differ.
I will back off.
Thank you, sir.
Withdrawn.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rock?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I did speak at length at this, at the last meeting, and I just want to reiterate that, you know, I am excited that there are new businesses coming into the city, and they did get approval from Planning Commission and Board of Zoning and Architecture Review Board, but what we're talking about here is changing a law for one particular business, and I want to be very careful about that because that can open the door for anybody to operate a business and serve food into a parked car in a parking lot between the hours of 1:00 ever to 1:30 in the morning. I just want to be very careful about that. So if I chose to open up, let's say, a curry drive-through park-in and we serve in your vehicle, I could have that up until 1:30 in the morning. I just want to be very careful about that because we are talking about neighboring community that this rule was put in place for a reason, and it's to protect the neighborhood within 75 feet, so I just want us to be careful about that. I am in favor of offering some type of special permit for this particular business. I know this is in a zoning issue. This is, it's in the business code, not necessarily the zoning code, but I do think that change in the law to benefit one business is very dangerous, and I am in favor of granting some type of special permit for this type of establishment just to prevent future businesses from taking advantage of this new law.
Okay. Sure, why don't we do that? Mr. Cicero, if you could address Mr. Rock's points.
One of the issues, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. One of the issues that the Law Department reviewed when this issue had come up is the fact that this ordinance had not been enforced against two other businesses that have drive-through windows, one of which is famous for, "Your order's not ready, sir. Would you please pull forward? We'll bring it out to you," which happens on Warrensville Road, real close to Silsby, a lot, and it has for about seven or eight years.
But not at 1:00 in the morning?
Not necessarily at 1:00 in the morning, but that conduct in and of itself was prohibited, as well as certain things that happened in the parking lot outside this very beautiful building on Memorial Day in the afternoon when the parade ends.
But not 1:00 in the morning?
Again, I agree with you, but not at 1:00.
Right. Okay. Is there further discussion?
Sorry.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the ordinance, and also it's on emergency, so there's two separate things?
I made that motion, and we need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's actually a second meeting.
It's okay.
Right. Right, right. Do we, okay, so as a point of order, Vice Mayor Partey reminded me that she has made a motion, but we need a second. I don't know if a second was, was had, so is there a second to?
Mr. Erdel seconded it.
Oh, Mr. Erdel did second it.
He did.
Yes, that is correct.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right. So is, is there any, is there any further discussion of this proposed ordinance? Seeing none, the first vote would be as to voting it on an emergency. So on emergency, if the Clerk of Counsel would take the roll.
We need a motion. Is this on suspension of the rules?
I'm sorry?
Is this on suspension of the rules?
On suspension.
Yes, thank you. A motion on suspension of the rules.
I said it was on emergency, so...
But this is on second reading.
Oh, so we need a motion for... Okay, so I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules so that this may go into effect immediately.
Yes, just for clarification, a, a motion, even though this is on second reading, a motion for suspension of the rules, if passed, would mean that if this ordinance were to pass, then it would go into effect immediately as opposed to waiting thirty days, which would be standard under our rules. So that is why it is still germane to have a, a motion to suspend the rules. So with that in mind, is there any further discussion?
Well, I made a motion to suspend. We need a second.
Oh, yes. We have a motion to suspend. Is there a second on the motion to suspend?
Second.
Okay, so motion by Vice Mayor Pardee, second by Councilman Erdl. Now, is there any discussion on the suspension of the rules? Motion. If there is none, if the clerk of council would take the role on this motion.
Mr. Rock?
Nay.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
So we have sufficient support to, for the, for the suspension of the rules. Now on the main motion, the motion, yes, we do have to make it again, so...
I move passage of amended, of the amendment of ordinance 2017-54.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Vice Mayor Pardee, second by Councilman Erdl. Is there any discussion on this motion? Councilman Weisman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I'm, 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 I'm pleased that Councilman Pass came here and implored us to, to hold off on the motion. I understand why, why we're not. I'm, I'm happy that the current administration has expressed its willingness to sit down with the parties involved, Swenson and Beachwood and the residents, and I, it's my sincere hope that those discussions prove fruitful and that we're able to proceed with some type of understanding that makes everybody, if not happy, perhaps less upset than they currently are. And I intend on voting for this with sort of that idea in mind, that we all can work forward and that we all have, have a partner in each of the other parties, Swenson's included in the discussions about the things that they can possibly do to make it easier on the residents. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any additional discussion?
I think you can voice an opinion.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you. If I may indulge the body, there are, there is something I would like to say about this myself. I did not create this situation. This is something that, that I am inheriting, and be that as it may. It is a, nevertheless, a situation where certain commitments have been made between the city and this particular business, while at the same time, we need to be good neighbors with our neighbors in Beachwood. And I am committed to doing what we can to be good neighbors with our neighbors in Beachwood. And regardless of whether we pass this today or don't pass this today, I will reiterate what I said earlier about my willingness to meet with Councilman Pash and other people in the neighborhood who are concerned about this situation and see what, what common ground we can reach to, to try to mitigate or ameliorate or, or work on this situation to achieve some level of satisfaction for the, for those who are affected. So I know that some of those residents are here this evening, and, and I know you're here, and I understand your feelings on this, I do. And I do intend to seeing what we can do. But at the same time, there are numerous things here at play, and, and I appreciate that as well. I do think that when it comes to development in our city, we do want to welcome businesses like Swenson's. In the, on the whole, I'm happy that they have chosen our city and that they are here. At the same time, there have been other instances where we have gone about proposed developments in the city where I believe, while I'm not aware that we did not provide adequate notice under the law, I understand that we did. I do believe that in the past, that where we have done more to be more transparent, to seek out more opinion, to, to maybe do more than that is required under the law just for the sake of making sure that we, as a community, we're together. And I think maybe that didn't happen here. And that doesn't mean that there is a violation of the law, not at all, but I do think that it is something that we need to be conscientious of as we view development going forward. So with that in mind...
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman Rock?
I would like to echo that. I want to thank you for, for bringing that up. And this is really nothing against Swenson's. What we're talking about here is just a law. And where I was coming from is that I'm just not personally in favor of changing the law for this particular business for this particular reason. But I am happy that businesses are choosing University Heights, and I'm thrilled that we're going to have a new business here. I just want us to be very careful about that. I don't know if we learned about it the right way. But I feel very confident you're going to work with Beachwood and the residents. I'm happy we're going to have an administration that will work with them to mitigate some of the issues, starting with landscaping in the spring, making sure that goes in properly, and making sure everything's built to code and in accordance with the drawing. So I'm happy about that. And also, with the new administration, I feel pretty confident that we will work harder to have better forms and are building apartments to ensure that things don't slip through cracks like this and ensure that we are working with owners and businesses to make sure they're doing everything within the code when they're proposing a project. So I feel confident that we're going to move forward in a, in a different direction, so...
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Rock. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilman, Woman Cameron?
Yes, sir. I do have a comment to, to the citizens of Beachwood. I want them to remember that they reached out to us in a couple of years ago when the same owner presented a proposal that was not particularly savory to the citizens of the city of Beachwood. And we took them to heart. We listened, and we made decisions with their interests in mind. And I just want to remind them that we will do so again. And we're already hit in this time if they fought back.
Continue.
We will continue to work with Beachwood citizens as they present their issues to us. And unfortunately, this time, we weren't, most members of council were not made aware of the issues that were being raised prior. However, we will endeavor to do better job of reaching out to, to our citizens on every border.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, then we have a motion on the floor to adopt, and if the clerk of council would call the role on that motion.
Mr. Rock?
Nay.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And the motion carries. The next item on the agenda is item H, motion to accept the bid and enter into contract with AAA flexible pipe cleaning for the city's 2018-2019 catch basin inlet sewer cleaning and televising program as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $298,800. Mr. Pecorni, are you prepared to present? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chuni, are you prepared to present on this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, if you'd proceed.
Bids were open on December 22nd. We had five bidders for this project. This is a project we've done in the past, a two-year commitment where they hold the unit prices that they bid in December for the next two years. Again, AAA was the low bidder at $298,800. They successfully performed this project the last two years, and we are recommending council enter in a contract with them for this project as the lowest and best bid.
And you know what? I also request it be passed on emergency, just so we would have a contractor in place should something happen next week or the week after.
Very good. Are there any questions for Mr. Chuni?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Weisman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chuni, any reservations for using AAA advanced plumbing and drain for this project?
Not.
You say we've used them for the last couple of years. You work with them, have a relationship with them?
And I defer to the service director because he directs the entire job, and I think he's very pleased with him.
Oh, but you're up there, Mr. Chuni, so I'm asking you.
I've worked with them in the past as well, not as close as Jeff has on this project, but I've always had good success with that company, yes.
Mr. Pecorni, this is the same project they've been doing thus for the last two years?
For the last four years or possibly longer.
Okay, so it sounds like they have a good track record, we're very pleased with them, and you have a relationship with it works?
Yes, we do.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further questions or discussion? If there is none, is there a, well, is there a motion to accept? And also, this would be requested to do it on an emergency. So I suppose we would need first a motion for suspension of the rules.
I'll make the motion, and on, on emergency.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Rock, both of the main motion and on the emergency. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilwoman Weiss. Is there any discussion on the suspension of the rules? If there is none, then if the clerk of council would call the role on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Okay. And is there any discussion on the main motion? If none, if the clerk would take the role on the main motion. I'm sorry.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chuni. Oh, and we have one more, yes, okay. This is item J, the motion to accept the bid and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for the 2017-1 citywide tree pruning and removal project. I'm sorry. Oh, there's a letter I. Oh, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you. I skipped one. Okay, letter I, motion to accept the bid and enter into contract with Fabrizi Trucking and Paving Company for 2018-2019 emergency sewer repairs as the lowest and best bid in an amount not to exceed $236,580. Mr. Chuni?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Again, on December 22nd, we had, we opened bids for this project where four bidders were, four bids were opened. This project is a service contract on, and it's an as-needed basis for emergency repairs to sewer lines, sewer laterals, pavement repairs above sewer laterals, things like that. Again, it's on an emergency basis directed by the service director when his forces can't get to it, or it is absolutely, it's too deep or something, we don't have the equipment to get there. This is, again, bid on a unit price basis. These unit prices are held for the next two years. This contract actually has a third year option. If the service director is happy with the company and wants to continue it, we can, we, it's our option only to do it for a third year. Fabrizi Trucking and Paving actually just completed this job. Prior to that, we had another contractor, but I, I am satisfied with their work. I know Mr. Pecorni is as well. And I recommend that the city enters into a contract with Fabrizi Trucking and Paving for the 2018-2019 emergency sewer repairs as the lowest and best bid at $236,580.
On emergency?
Yes, on emergency, again, in case something happens in the next month, yes.
Okay, very good. Mr. Rock?
I just have a question. Looking at this, it says it's on an as-needed basis, so if this gets approved for $236,580, that's regardless of what happens, it's, or, or is it an hourly basis? I'm confused how that works.
There's unit prices in there, linear foot of pipe, a square yard of pavement, or something like that, and the total amount over two years cannot, cannot exceed the $236.
Cannot exceed the $236.
Correct.
Okay, so they, they started zero.
Started zero, that's right.
Okay, so if there were some major sewer repairs and it goes well beyond the $236, they still have the cap at a $236?
Correct.
Okay.
We couldn't go over that amount.
Very good. Thank you, Councilman Rock. Is there any further, yes, Councilman Weisman?
Thank you, Mayor. So just generally speaking, what are we talking about here? In terms of the repairs?
A collapse to T, a collapsed lateral. I believe we even use it for like the water main breaks, for after Cleveland Water repairs a water line. They don't do the street, we do. If Jeff's, Service Department's guys are too busy, can't get to it, they're plowing snow or something, we bring in Fabrizi to get to, fix a pavement right away rather than driving on stone. Anything else?
That's correct. Mostly, mostly sewer repairs. Angeline collapses, a lateral collapses. We call them, and they are made on a unit basis. And a, a show-up fee, which is in the contract, they have a linear foot of pipe they have replaced based upon size. And backfill materials and road restoration also the same.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
In the past, we would have to quickly get out, go out and get quotes for this type of work and get it to lowest bidder, get it to council and that kind of stuff. Now we have somebody on call on a bid unit price basis because they had a bid.
So there's a hole in the ground for a week or two weeks till we approve it, you have them right away?
Yeah, and it's in their contract. They have to respond in a certain amount of time.
Excellent, okay. And these, again, same questions. We work with these guys, they do good work, not a problem.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pecorni.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Weisman. Any further questions or comments or debate? Seeing none, we, is there, is there a motion to suspend the rules and, do we do that as separate motions? Is that the better form?
So moved.
They're together? Okay. Right, okay, so it's a, it's a motion, it's a motion to suspend the rules and to adopt and accept this bid with, for Fabrizi Trucking, so...
So moved.
So moved, okay. So Councilman Weisman has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilman Erdl. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if, we would take a vote first on the suspension of the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And on the main motion?
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardee?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron? Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, item J on the agenda, motion to accept the bid and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for the 2017-1 citywide tree pruning and removal project. And now, Mr. Pecorni.
Thank you, Mayor. We did open contracts for tree pruning and removal Friday, December 22nd. There were three bidders. I am recommending Park Tree Service Incorporated of Eastlake as the lowest and best bidder at $37,243. Attached to the cover letter, you will find a list of all of those trees by address with a description of the work that is going to be done, and in the last three columns are the bids that were received. The other two bidders were considerably higher. We have not had Park Tree Service do our pruning and removals contract in previous years, so this would be a first year. But in speaking with them, they do have the manpower and equipment to do it, and I'm recommending that we offer the contract to them. And this also will need to be on emergency because we'd like to have all the pruning and removal work done by March.
Very good. Are there... Is there any discussion or questions for Mr. Pecorni? Councilman Rock?
Yes, a couple of questions. This goes on like public bids, correct?
Correct.
How does a firm from Topeka, Kansas find us?
I don't know. I did not ask them how they located that bid. However...
They were expensive, so I could see why we're...
It does go on...
I could see why they factored that into the price. Now, there was a couple of back-and-forth questions in the last meeting when we were talking about this regarding a tree on Favre Sham, and I know there were some emails back and forth with the prior administration, and then council got into the loop on that. Is there any comment you can make on the tree limbs? There was concerns by a resident on Favre Sham of falling tree limbs.
The falling tree limbs on Favre Sham have to do with the tree that is located on private property in front of a house.
Not on the tree lawn.
Not on a tree lawn. It is not in this contract. However, the one that was brought up on Grenville, which is in this contract, was actually at the house next door to the address that which was provided.
Yeah, I just looked at a number. But thank you. I didn't notice it was in the packet here, so I appreciate that. So for the... For instance, the house on Favre Sham, I mean, could someone be cited for that sort of thing? What are your steps for that?
We write them a letter. First, we notify them that they have a problem with that tree, and that has been done. They were given a letter noticing that they need to take the dead wood and hanging branches out of that tree. Generally, we give them 60 days to respond to that.
Gotcha. And one last question. The house on Milton in which the tree limbs get clipped by trucks was at 245... I didn't see it on the list here, but did you get a chance to take a look at that?
I did. That was on a previous bid list of last year's tree pruning. It did not need pruning, according to the arborist, and we left it alone. The resident does want it pruned. We do have one limb that goes out over the street with a nick in it. We can cut off that whole limb. Just do that with the Service Department staff.
I appreciate that. Yeah, that was the limb that I looked at that had gashes from a box truck head hit it. Thank you for going out there. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Rock. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Mayor.
I guess. Vice Mayor Pardie.
Thank you. You indicated that Park's Tree hasn't worked for us, but you did check references into other projects. Can you share with us what other cities Park's Tree has worked in?
I cannot right off the top of my head, but I did ask them for a list.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? Is there a... Is there a motion to suspend the rules and to accept this bid?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Weisman. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Second by Mr. Erdl.
That keeps going down.
Is there any discussion on this... On the suspension of the rules? If there is none, if the Clerk of Council would take the vote on the motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
And is there any discussion on the main motion? Councilman Weisman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just would like to echo a point I've made at previous meetings, that I think the citizens of the city would be particularly receptive to some kind of public meeting and discussion about the arborists, the plant, tree trimming, stuff like that. We get a lot of calls on trees and tree trimming, and I think the residents, if they were sort of in the loop as we went forward with this kind of project, would be interested in hearing what they had to say and bringing the concerns up.
I think that's an excellent point, Councilman Weisman, and I believe we ought to do that. Mr. Pecorni, if we could make a note of planning to have such a meeting. I know, speaking from my own personal experience, I myself, a few years ago, saw as a resident some tree trimming being done at what I thought was an odd time, and I was very alarmed. And that did not stop me from calling the mayor at home to express my concern, and we ended up having a discussion on the fly about things that perhaps I would have benefited from had I attended such a meeting.
We will make a note to arrange such a meeting.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, the Clerk of Council would take the roll.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Mr. Weisman?
Aye.
Mr. Erdl?
Aye.
Mrs. Pardie?
Aye.
Mrs. Cameron?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Very good. Next item on the agenda, Item K, is a motion to hold an executive session immediately following this regular meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel, legal, and real estate matters. I do not believe there's anything pending that requires such a discussion. Mr. Cicero, I believe, has indicated that he is not aware of anything. I don't know if there are any members of council who are aware of something that we should know about. Seeing none, and there's no motion to accept at this juncture for that. And we'll move to Director's Reports. Director of Finance, Mr. Sheehan.
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Law Director, Mr. Cicero.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety.
No report.
Thank you, Chief Hammett. Okay, Public Service, Mr. Pecorni.
No report.
Thank you. And the Building Commissioner, Mr. McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor. No report.
Thank you, Mr. McReynolds. And then, Community Development, Mr. Grogan Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Never a shortage of things to say, of course. So just keeping it brief, I wanted to introduce the Heritage Home Program. That is a program that I know I've spoken to you about before. I'm going to just pass down the line. There's two sheets of paper coming for you. These are the 2017 and 2016 reports. The reason I'm passing these out, we have received an invoice from the Cleveland Restoration Society, which is the caretaker of the Heritage Home Program here in University Heights. We have received an invoice to renew, and the mayor and I thought it would be beneficial to bring it before council. We would love to hear your feedback, should you have heard from residents or have thoughts and feedback on the program and residents' experiences. Part of the benefit of this program is really threefold. The first is they provide onsite visits. So should you have a project in mind, you want to redo the kitchen, and you need help with colors or cabinets that are period appropriate to your home, and those homes have to be 50 years or older, of which 4100 of the approximate 4,500 households here in the city are eligible, meaning that 50-year requirement. So should you have a project in mind, you can invite them out to consult with you on that project. But if you don't have a project, but you think, hey, my home needs a little tender loving care, you can have them out and they'll tour the property with you and give you some ideas of what things you could do to kind of bring life back into the home should it need it. The second thing is for that project or a project that comes out of that site visit, they offer low-interest loans. So depending on the term and the value of the loan, that interest rate varies between 2% and 2.5%. And actually, they partner with two banks, Third Federal and Key Bank, both of which have branches here in University Heights. So it's a great place for our residents to both reach out to the Cleveland Restoration Society, but then also do some banking here in the city. And the third and final element of this is that they will help review contractors' bids. So if you get a roof repair and you get two, three bids and they all seem pretty high, they will review those bids for you and help you understand the jargon, because I don't think any of us are roofers, so for us to look at a roofing bid might be a little confusing. And that particular element is really beneficial to the seniors here in the community. I've heard back from them, and they say that is really helpful in kind of looking through some of the bids, that they're not quite sure what all the contractors proposing. So that invoice is approximately $4,400 within the mayor's spending authority, but again, we want to hear from you guys if you have any thoughts, experiences, feedback from residents. That's an important part of this. Also, in talking with Mayor Brennan about this, seeing some of the uptick in the loan sign, both the number and the value, one of the things that the mayor pointed out is that last year, the information session for the program was held approximately one month sooner, so more in line with what people are thinking, you know, in terms of projects. So getting, you know, they're thinking about projects now, they're not thinking about them midsummer when they're looking at redoing the roof and whatnot. So giving them the information a little bit earlier, but also having it at City Hall was, we believe, a benefit to the residents. So look forward to a date being announced for us to be able to do that again and hopefully see more use of that program and whatnot. The second thing is a brief update. The Warrensville Mid-Block Crosswalk Project is moving along. Currently, Mr. Chuni is working on the engineering plans, but Mr. Chuni and Mr. Pecorni and myself met with the ODOC group as part of that TLCI funding that we had received. And the hope is to bid the project out by June. So we're trying to keep a tight timeline here on that. In talking with Mayor Brennan about the project, he asked, would there be bike lanes associated with the project? And yes, there will be plans or are planned for bike lanes, and Mr. Chuni and I were talking about that this morning, so those can be incorporated into the plan as well. And we've been in contact with South Euclid and Shaker Heights, and so they're aware that all this is going on. And our hope is to have those be continuous bike lanes and not be the bike lanes to nowhere, just here in University Heights. So just wanted to keep you guys updated on those two things. We'd love to hear from you guys, should you have any feedback. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. If I could just reiterate something that Mr. Grogan Myers said. The invoice for the Heritage... For the Homes Program is within the mayor's spending authority, and I'm inclined to simply proceed with it. However, I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of the...
Situation.
The, like, yes, the situation of my general desire to proceed with the program. My understanding, my sense of it, is that it is a good program that we should be continuing to be a part of and make available to our residents at a cost that does not seem to be out of line for the benefit that it could provide to residents of our city. And if any of you should happen to think otherwise or know of reasons why we ought not do it, well, then I would be very glad to hear that feedback, especially because I'm aware of no reason why we ought not proceed with it. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grogan Myers. Okay, that concludes the Director's Reports. Then we have reports from standing committees. Building Committee Chairman Mark Weisman.
Thank you. No report, Mr. Mayor Brennan.
Okay. Thank you. Civic Information Chairwoman Pamela Cameron.
No report, Mayor. I would like to comment. I feel like I got robbed out of my committee, but I'm going to bear wrestle Mr. Erdl, see what I can do to resume my involvement.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
I didn't know that either.
All right. Finance Committee Chairwoman Susan D. Pardie.
Thank you, Mayor. We will have meetings in January on the Mondays, January 22nd and January 29th to review the budget. I understand the finance director will be working with you, Mayor, to start roughing out the budget in the next week or so, so hopefully we'll have something and we'll be able to review it, send it out to both the Finance Committee and joint the Advisory Finance Committee for review well in advance of the meeting on the 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would simply add at this juncture that the...
That we are operating under a continuing resolution, that the outgoing mayor did not